Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome everyone. This is the city of Commonwealth Heights. It's Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. It's just after 5:00 PM. This is our work session. I want to begin with excusing Councilmember Talia Bruce, who's traveling and who, she's actually out of the country, I understand, and will not be joining us, joining us this evening. Also, I will begin with reading a determination of why this meeting is being conducted online rather than here at City Hall. And that determination states, pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 524207, for the city's mayor as a chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19 coronavirus, which has potential to overwhelm our healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. And again, therefore, why we're meeting virtually and hope everybody's well and, and, and those that you care about are well as well also. With that, as I said, we'll come back to the agenda. And we will review the business meeting items, which is part of our seven o'clock meeting. We'll have pledge and welcome once again and some citizen comments. We have two action items this evening. It is election night, so hopefully we can get you out of it early and you can watch the results on your TV because it should be quite interesting. The first item of action is a resolution 2020-52. It's entry into an agreement with Salt Lake County for Tier Two Zap Funding. I understand that's for our, our arts program. So Tim, you want to introduce that?
Yeah, it's, it's a grant that was prepared. Paula and Ann at Chel were instrumental in preparing that application and getting it in. It's for a variety of different elements, including musical, Christmas programs, city film festival, art, teaching resources, marketing, photography, resources related to the things that we do and technical equipment, the grants for 13,900 and we're recommending approval of that.
Okay, do we have a match with that, you know?
I believe there is a match and that was budgeted in our arts council program, so.
I understand it's pretty minimal too.
Yeah, it is.
Item 4.2, unless there's any question on that Zap Grant? And it's quite a thorough process. I sit on that review committee for the county and it's a very thorough process and I understand we scored very well. Item 4.2 is Resolution 2020-53 approving a consulting agreement with Zion's Bank Public Finance for COVID-related economic impact analysis. I think that's with our small businesses. So Tim, you want to introduce that as well or Mike Johnson?
I have Mike do that.
Yeah, thanks. So this is a, we wanted to do an economic impact study. Essentially a market study, but just to analyze the direct effects or at least the short-term effects of the pandemic on the retail businesses and different industries in our cities to take a deeper dive into some of the tax revenues we've seen and, and analyze, you know, different trends in the market and where those revenues are coming from. Analyze different ways people are doing business because of the pandemic and then try to identify, you know, what, what things will we see return to some sense of normal and what things may we see, you know, be different moving forward in, in the market. This will go hand in hand with the general plan and will help us hopefully be flexible and with our policies and our ordinances in the future to make sure we're accommodating these different trends in, in city businesses. This is all being funded with CARES revenue. So, so this is paid, this is about, it's just under $15,000, but it'll be paid out of the CARES fund. And the study should be done by the end of the year.
Will we be able to use this information to come up with maybe a strategy to look for ways to facilitate some of those small businesses that impacted greater than others?
Yeah, I think that's part of the, one of the purposes is it's going to give us some knowledge that we can use to, to create policy that supports. You know, I think we're going to see some businesses were resilient. They were strong and some were affected more. And then we can look at ways to support or buoy up those that were affected a little more.
Thank you.
And I think the plan would be for Zion's to come present this when it's done, probably early 2021.
Any questions on that resolution being considered tonight in our business meeting? Okay, thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mike. And then we, of course, will have a consent calendar, which is minutes of a couple of meetings in October. Okay, going back to our work session. We have some staff reports. The first is a budget and revenue review. So Tim and Scott will turn over to you and you can share that with us.
Scott, I'll just turn it to you and as, as you know, we've been presenting this each month and wanting to give you an understanding where we're at, especially with sales tax revenue and Scott will share his screen and present that information.
Okay, so just after our last meeting, we received our August sales tax numbers. So our August sales tax receipts were the highest August ever that we've had for the city. At this point in time of two months collected, we're sitting at, at 20% of our overall revenues. Now remember our revenues are, are in terms of our budget are down significantly. We put it at 5,750,000. We're tracking more along the lines of 6,750,000 or greater. We're about 116,000 ahead of the prior year. The prior year, we received 6,719,000. So things are looking very well in terms of our sales tax collection. Flipping over to this screen, this is the highway sales tax trend. This is shared on a little bit different basis than the normal sales tax data because it only relates to the county. But our budget is 600,000 year to date through August, we've received 102,000. Year to date, that's 13,000 ahead of what we received in 2020. In 2020, we just barely missed our budget by about $14,000. But it looks like we're on target to meet or maybe slightly exceed the 600,000. If things keep going how they are at this point in time. But those are the two items of update that I had for you. I will distribute these two graphs to Paula so she can get that out to everyone. So you can all have that.
Thank you. Any, any questions of Scott regarding the revenue projections that he's just shared with us? Obviously, that's very good news.
Yeah. Can you guarantee? Discussing a budget amendment as well?
We will be discussing some budget. There's, there are a lot of budget adjustments that need to occur. We will be discussing some mainly related to capital. But we will have some additional ones. We'll probably do those either later in December or early in January for the, the other various items.
But tonight, the next item is, the next item that we will discuss will be a budget amendment. So.
So any questions on the budget and revenue review? If, if not, go ahead and talk about item B, which is the proposed budget amendment.
Okay, so this was sent out with you in your council packet. I did notice that I had one error in it and I'll point that out down below. And then there was one thing brought to my attention that I was unaware of when I had prepared this last week. So there, back in, I don't know if it was June or July of 2019, we received a contribution from Granite Construction for $2,500. That was intended to be used for the 2020 Butlerville days. We have been instructed to utilize those funds for the Utah Open Lands Purchase. So since that revenue was received, not quite a year and a half ago, but 16 or so months ago in the general fund, we need to transfer that revenue from the general fund to the capital improvements fund to have that be available. So this part here on the general fund is, is transferring. It's under expense, but it's really a transfer out, which acts a lot like an expense of $2,500 that will be going to the capital improvements fund for that use. Moving on to the capital improvements fund, we're rebudgeting the carryover capital projects. And these are projects that didn't finish from the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. The net change in fund balance year over year was $2,427,000 positive. That's a result of not finishing those projects that were in process. We're recommending and, and some of that is interest as well. And so the interest of course has no real claim on anything. That's just additional money. We're recommending rebudget of $2,391,000 of net cost to the city. Once we factor in revenue and you can see that here. So the net expenditures that we're recommending rebudget is 4,122, offset by revenues of 1,730,000, giving us that net of $2,391,000 that we're recommending to rebudget in this year, this year's budget. Now, one note is as, as capital projects finish and go through their lifecycle, sometimes it costs us a little extra. Sometimes it costs us a little less. We're recommending to utilize, it's about $200,000 of unspent funds from completed projects towards the Scottish Drive Road and Stormwater Project. And that was discussed about a month, maybe a month and a half ago in an update from Matt Ship. And, and I don't remember the exact date that that was discussed in here, but that would be included in this rebudget amount. There are pass-through funds. So initially, we thought Salt Lake County would make a direct contribution to the Utah Open Lands Purchase. That money is actually going to come through us. So we need to recognize a revenue of 500,000 offset by an expense of 500,000 so that we can pass that money along to the Utah Open Lands Purchase budgetarily. And then there was a condition, additional contribution in, I think, September of this year of $9,000 from Granite Construction that is intended to be utilized for that Utah Open Lands Purchase. This is, here is the $2,500 that we had talked about up above from the general fund. The part that's highlighted yellow is the part that I omitted. We need to have the expense side in there so that we can budgetarily spend that. Then this, this side here would be the transfer in for that. So the, the yellow part here, it was zero on my spreadsheet that I had sent out with the package. So that would be incorrect. And then this number six is we would like to utilize $40,400 from the stormwater impact fees reserve. And if you remember, our impact fees are reserved for certain things in the stormwater for, it has to be stormwater related. But this would be to fund a stormwater utility fee and program development study that basically gets us more ready to be able to implement an impact or a stormwater fee when that time comes for $40,400. This would leave about $40,000 remaining in the stormwater fee. And we still have about 140 plus thousand available in our transportation impact fees that, that will probably get utilized for something along the lines of a store or a transportation study at some point in time in the future. Anyhow, all this nets down here, you can see the, the net impacts on the capital improvements fund would be an increase of 4,673, almost $74,000 of expense, an increase of $2,242,000 of revenue. And then the net cost, which is really the carryover cost plus this $2,500 transfer in from the general fund plus this $40,400 that would be utilizing stormwater impact fees in order to finish. And so that's kind of the net. And as, as we, I think Councilman Bracken mentioned before, there will be additional budget adjustments at some point in time, either later in December or in January that aren't, aren't here. But this is all the ones that I'm currently aware of for the capital projects fund that directly impact that.
Scott, is that last one, is that to pay for what Zion's has already done or is that an additional amount to further work on that project?
Matt, Matt can address that. Matt, do you want to address that or I can if you don't want?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, that's fine. The, this is in addition to Councilmember Bracken. It's, it's for the development, actually, the, the actual development of the program. Zion's did a study on a fee and this is taking that a step further, developing the manual. It's developing the the program itself for how we, how we implement that fee. There's been some questions about how a person would let, look to do something on their property to get credit for it. We have to develop that as well. It depends. There's, there's a lot of things involved. Instead of just saying it's this many dollars a month, we have to show what it's for and how we can do it. And so there's an appeals process we need to come up with. We have an ordinance we need to come up with. We have the manual, the fee manual, and then we have our stormwater manual, operations manual as well. So it's quite a bit of work left before we're ready to present to the public.
Yeah.
All right. Two questions I have, if it's all right, Scott or Tim and even Matt. Back on the Scottish Drive. So when I look at the, the transfer of funds from, from capital, so everything is previously been budgeted except the 200,000? Is there anything? I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a lot of money without detail for, so I, I look at that and go, okay, that's four million dollars in expense with 1.7 in revenue. But is there, how much of that is new? Is it just the Scottish Drive or is there other, is there other new stuff in there?
No, there's no new stuff in here other than the Scottish Drive. And the Scottish Drive isn't necessarily new. It just is, it was outlined before that that project is running to a little bit higher costs in order to truly complete it. So all this that's here was all stuff that was budgeted prior. So our last budget of 2020, 2019, 2020, this was all included in there. And as projects finished and it's, maybe there was, you know, you know, a few thousand, say five or 10 or 20,000 or whatever from this project to that project. As various projects finished, this would be the remaining amount that, that was in there, the net of the 2,391,000.
Okay. And I, and I remember the Scottish Drive and I think Matt justified that well. So the, so actually, if I look at this budget adjustment outlined, that item number six, which is stormwater fee, is actually an additional budget request.
This one is, yes.
Okay.
The, the ones that are really truly new are everything but number two. Number two is a rebudget. Everything else is kind of new or repurposing.
But the stormwater impact fee reserve, so I have a little bit of a question, but I think I, I just have to get my head around it. Is that we've not approved a stormwater fee? But yet we're going to go ahead and prepare everything. So will we have more discussion about that process and, and look at what the, I guess it's an RFP, what it includes or how this fits into the timing? I mean, I understand we still have a lot to review. Yeah.
Yep, I'm sorry, Tim.
Go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, yeah, part of this process, Mayor, is bringing back this to the city council, obviously, for reviews of what we're doing and where we are for input. And so it's not rolling it out and then coming to you and say, okay, we're done. It's, it's doing it along the way with a couple of council meetings before we roll it out. Once you're comfortable with it, then we push it out to the public. And just to follow up, these are impact fee monies that we're using. They're, they, they have, they, there's a category you can only use those in. So, and this is one of those categories. So it's not coming out of the general fund per se.
I understand that, but still all out of the budget and still out of so, yeah, I just, I think you answered my question well by the council have an opportunity to be educated as this is one step in a, in a strategic process as we look at the whole stormwater potential and possibility, but it's not, it's not, I don't want the public to think, okay, this is all a done deal and it's all automatic. Yeah.
Oh, this is scheduled for about a four-month process, the way it's laid out, council meetings. And then once we're comfortable, when I say we, I mean you as a council, and you're ready to go forward, we have a program, we can roll to the public. And then we can answer those specific questions that come up and you'll be able to answer those as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any, any, any other questions regarding the budget revenue or the proposed budget amendment? Okay, thank you, Scott and Tim with that. Now let's move to item C on tonight's work session and Matt will turn it over to you to talk about the Ben Go Boulevard Roundabout Design Discussion and we can get everybody updated and see the latest and best. Welcome Riley and Robbie.
Riley's going to love this. We tested your truck on this roundabout, Riley. It goes through. So.
All right, we're all, we're all in.
When you see this, don't.
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
Don't panic on me. Mayor and Council, I'm going to, what I'm going to do, I need to share my screen. I am going to go through, as you're aware, next Thursday, we have a public open house for this route, for the roundabout project. And part of that we're doing, sorry, I'm losing a few things. We're doing a two, two types of open houses. One, we're doing a virtual open house, which is what the slideshow is about. And we're also at the same time, for those who do want to come in, we'll be holding a social distancing COVID distancing meeting in the room, in the community room. So we'll have two different meetings going on, but for those who want to stay home and watch it, they can online. And so what I thought I would do is kind of give you a, the draft version of where we are right now. So you know what we're doing and it'll all, hopefully it'll answer a lot of your questions as well about the roundabout and what's happening. So really, I'm going to kind of go through these somewhat quickly. So stop me along the way if I'm getting too fast or ahead of where I should be. So history of the project, just so to bring those who weren't on council up to speed of where we are, this count, this project is a CMAC project, which means it's congestion mitigation and air quality. We got a $2.5 million CMAC grant from this. Of that, we're required to pay 6.77%. We also were able to get the right-of-way acquisition money of 40, 427,000 to buy the property around. That counted towards our 6.77% match. So at the end of the day, there's no money out of our general fund pocket on this project. So we know you've been asked a few questions and I've seen that come up in a few articles here and there about, or speaking to residents about where the, we should be using that money. But this money is accounted for in this project and none of it's coming out of the general fund. Project need.
One thing, just for clarification, could you maybe put a time context of when the 2.5 was actually approved? Isn't that like eight or 10 years ago?
Yeah, the 2.5 was approved. Yeah, you, it's between eight and 10 years ago. It was, it was sitting on the books before I showed up and and about the time I got here, it was ready to start, which is usually a three-year process. So it's about eight to 10 years when it was approved originally. Project need, there's delays that go on. We have this offset intersection, as you're all aware. Here's City Hall to bring you up to speed on where we are. And this is the high school down here in the corner and the LDS church up here in the northeast corner. So we have this offset intersection of 23, 25 and 2,300 that intersect with Bangal at about 200 feet between them. The idea was to take that offset and make it the least impactful as we can. And by didn't, and knock down some of the peak delays that we're seeing during school morning and school afternoon hours. There's also in the area, a part of the goal or the project need was to reduce the number of accidents in this area. There was a fairly high number of accidents at this intersection. We pulled up the, when we did the original application, we pulled up the information. Over the last nine years, there's been about 75 accidents at this intersection. And a lot of those are based on the fact of the, or because of the alignment and the configuration of this intersection. It is somewhat confusing. Project goals was to improve pedestrian safety. As you know, we have a lot of students over there and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic across the street, improve the safety traffic. Real goal, because we have this as CMAC money, it is air quality improvement and reduce the traffic delays. We had completed last year, we completed the environmental clearance on this project. That was those two open houses we held last year. So the environmental project was finished and this was the study area. Just to give you a general idea of where the study area for the environmental study area. The preliminary design of the roundabout, what you're seeing in front of you now is what was originally presented at the the environmental meetings. And at the environmental meetings, we had a lot of comments. Obviously, there were some concerns, a lot of concerns about pedestrians, a lot of concerns about traffic, bicyclists, but mostly it had to do a lot to do with pedestrians. So this was the original project that was presented and it had, and I won't say it doesn't, it, it was a concept drawing that was put together for the application. So this was not the final design. It was a concept drawing to get us started on that. So the question then becomes why the roundabout? One of the things in traffic engineering, one of the first things you do learn is four-way intersections are the points of conflict. We have, there's about 32, as you can see. This is traffic movements of conflict, conflicts that'll happen. And then there's vehicle pedestrian conflicts. So one of the big benefits of the, of a roundabout is reduces those conflict points. We go from 32 vehicle conflict points to eight. And then we go from 24 vehicle pedestrian conflict points down to eight. So it's a significant reduction in those. Other benefits do include lower traffics, lowering the traffic speeds and the severity of the collisions at intersections. And I'm sure Robbie can tell you at these T intersections, car is running a red light. They're coming in full steam and they can T-bone a car. Where in a roundabout, you, the, there's still accidents. No one's saying they're accident free. But the impact of those accidents is significantly less. You get brush buys on cars or things of that nature. So these are some things that happen. And also the lowering the cost, the maintenance, you're not taking care of the lights and what have you. And there is a little more aesthetics to it when you have a roundabout. So also we reducing, this is an important one. It's very important.
Excuse me, Matt, can I just, on the, on the pedestrian reduction there, that is over a standard.
Excuse me, Matt, can I just, on the, on the pedestrian reduction there, that is over a standard intersection? That would be my guess.
Yes, over a four, yeah, a standard intersection. There's, they, nationwide, there's about a 40% reduction in those. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, this, this one's a little strange with the way that it's configured. It's, uh, it's very well-known to have. Probably a little bit higher number of jaywalkers in the standard four-way woods, so. Yeah, probably, I would expect we'd realize a little more than that. I just wanted to confirm that that was on a standard.
You'll notice the, 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 uh, the source on this is the Federal Highways Administration. Um, so this is a national number as we're looking at, but sure. Uh, the other issue, and we, we just, I think the council, you just, uh, talked about, this is the last meeting. This has a lot to do with idling. At intersections, you have a lot of idling issues, especially during the school time. When you have so much traffic coming out, it ends up with a, a large number of vehicles just sitting and waiting. So we reduce, uh, the idling in the roundabouts pollutants that we were concerned about as we went through this. Carbon monoxide, the nitrogen, the nitrogen oxides, uh, the VOCs and the, uh, particle matters. 10 micro, micrometers and micrometers. Um, were looked at based on our traffic data that we have. Um, and the delays that an intersection would cause, we were looking at about 106 hours of traffic delays or idling time. And the reduction, uh, based on this roundabout is about 4.4 tons of that matter reduced. At this intersection. So I think every little bit counts, and that's one of the reasons this is a CMAC project. The construction and air quality mitigation.
The, the 106 hours of idling daily, I think, is, that's the one that I've been, that, that's, that's always hit me. Um, because there's very few times you will go through that intersection that there's not four, six, or eight cars usually waiting at one of the legs. For the lights to change.
What we heard from the meeting and the environment, the environmental meeting, like I said, was, uh, a big concern for students, pedestrians. And you can see our students and our pedestrians, they're, they seem so happy, so. So bottom line, we listened to it. Here's where we are today. We went through about three or four iterations of a roundabout. We've gone through an oval about, we've gone through an egg about, if you will, we've gone through a circle about. We've gone through quite a few things. We've even examined. Buying out homes and making a T-intersection, a squared-off, a proper T-intersection. So we've gone through a lot of iterations on this project, and what we've come up with is this configuration that you're seeing right here in front of you. And it meets the, uh, it meets the, uh, goals of the project that we set for ourselves. Um, in the original, there was, this, if you see right, I don't know if you can see my mouse moving. This is the road. This is 2325 right here. And this over here is 2,300. So you can see that in the original, there was a bypass road that went along here. We eliminated the bypass road. By doing that, we eliminated points of conflict. We eliminated some issues with the neighbors. Um, in this area, we've been able to push the road away from the home, a lot farther than what it was originally designed as. And, uh, we've, what, by doing this, it allows us, we tested it on the largest truck we have. In the design to ensure that it can go through this roundabout without having to make circles. To get to where they want to go. So, and I'll show you some of those, uh, features that we put in this roundabout. Roundabout, the new design includes, you know, the reduced speed crosswalk at each line of sight for the vehicles. The crosswalks are located, uh, in places prior to vehicles accelerating. Um, there are pedestrian refuge islands and Z crossings. And what we mean by a Z crossing, and oh, let me go back if I could. You can see, once again, if you can see my mouse right here, this is a Z crossing. So when a pedestrian crosses the road and they're going north, their, their back is not turned to the, uh, traffic. They can actually look at the oncoming traffic. There is a refuge in this raised island. And then they cross one more time, and then they're facing this line of traffic. So we've reduced that conflict point. So there's a place for refuge for a pedestrian. And they only have to cross one line of traffic at a time in getting across, and that is on all of these legs. These are Z crossings in these locations to look at this traffic. And then these as well are built such that you're looking back at the traffic and not, not basically turning your back on anything. As you, as you're walking across the road. So that's what the Z crossing is showing right here. You're looking at the cars coming your way. There's also a share of the road bicycle for the roundabout in the middle. If you're, I, we, we call them, well, I don't know what else to call them. We call them spandex bikers. These are people who are into biking and know what they're doing. They can actually go through the roundabout as a shared road. Now, if you're riding your bike and you're with your family and you want to avoid the roundabout, I'll show you in a minute. But we actually, well, I'll show you now, we'll back it up. We actually have ramps that if you're coming down this bike lane. You can get on the sidewalk, which is a 10-foot sidewalk, and go down around and follow the pedestrian path with your bicycle. And then come back out onto the bicycle lane and bypass the roundabout all the way around. You can do that on all these legs as you're going through. There's a, there's a bypass for people who don't want to ride their bikes through there. And then at each crossing, there's also flashing beacons for the people to cross. So give you an idea of some of the features, and like I said, I'm gonna kind of go through these fairly quick right here. But these are the crossings, the, uh, student crossings or pedestrian crossings are in orange. You can see those. You can see the sidewalk as it goes around the roundabout, um, and all the different crossings we've talked about. We also install, will be installing decorative railing fencing, and we're doing that to. In essence, push people into where they need to cross. Um, as you know, students, people, they'll take the path of least resistance, and we've got to kind of. Push people to where they do need to cross. We don't want them obviously crossing the road through the middle of the roundabout, so we've made it. Comfortable, we've made it safe, and, uh, we've kind of pushed the issue of where we want them to go with this fencing. This wrought iron fencing. Um, we have down here, these two homes we purchased, um, with that right-of-way fund. So right here, there'll be a little pocket park with benches and a picnic table and whatnot. We'll be sitting right in here. Just a place for students. Right now, students will come up over here, and they'll generally congregate right here on the LDS Church lawn. But it gives them a place to congregate right in here with benches and this trail, and they can, for a lunch break. Or they can come across here to City Hall, which they're doing now, and sit right outside of my office and have lunch. And so there's a few places for them to go. Uh, ramps for entering the multi-use bike path that we talked about. You can see them right here. There's a ramp. There's an exit ramp, so they're all throughout the roundabout, and they'll be signed accordingly, so they'll know. And at each crossing, there's an RRFB, which is a rap- rapid rectangular flashing beacon. It's not a school crosswalk, but it's, if you hit the button, it has the flashing beacons to let people know that there is a pedestrian. In the crosswalk, and there's buttons at each location so that you can make sure that it's flashing as you're crossing.
Those are similar to what's up around the U. We have one on Bengal right now by the high school.
We have one just over here west of City Hall, yeah, the crossing, um, right now, so to give you an idea. And we have it at a few of our, uh, school crosswalks over on Danish. We have one over, that we have one over there, so. And down on Creek Road, we have a couple, so they are out there.
Matt, are those all powered by the power that's running the intersection right now? Those aren't all solar, are they?
No, they'll be powered. They'll be powered lights. Um, we have the sharrows, which we've talked about as a bike path, to give bicyclists who want to stay on the road the ability to ride through. Um, the new high school entrance, we worked with the high school. This is what their parking configuration will look like. They are. They are making this their main parking area, so this is gonna be fairly important. The way that you'll notice, we've worked with them on getting traffic to channel out, come down these lanes and then channel out. So we work very closely with the school district on this layout, on, on our layout to tie into theirs. So there's been a lot of communication going on there. We talked about the trucks and, uh.
All right, Matt, I have a question, is. Yeah, now, how many entrances are there to Brighton? This isn't the only one, is it?
No, no, if you go south down, down this road, there's a road going down south. And at the bottom, south of the school, there's another large parking lot. And there is also over on the west side of the school, another parking lot. So one entrance will come out, actually comes out down at the very south end. So the cars will be coming up through, and then there's this one. Those are their two main parking areas.
So anybody that wants to go to Brighton High School has to go through a part of the roundabout.
No, you actually have a lot, but now you have a lot of people that'll come up, that currently come up from Willow Creek. And will probably still utilize some of that back.
Yeah, you still have the back route to come in through the, down the southern end of the school.
But there will be, uh, yeah, if you were coming from west or one of the other directions to get into this. There is another entrance, I think, on the west side of this parking lot, but the main one would be here.
I think that's Christine's question, so make it clear for information, is that there is another entrance directly west? Of this, down by the seminary building?
Not, no, not for this parking lot. That, down there is a bus drop-off entrance.
Okay.
From what I understand, so the, I'm gonna.
The only other one then is on the south side, as you come up through the residential area like they used to.
Correct. Um, hang on, I'm seeing if I can. Can you see the Google, my Google Earth, is that showing up?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'll get in the right spot before I take you anywhere. There we go. So this parking lot down here, this parking lot exists down here. This is the one that we're, they're modifying, this area right here for a full parking. This road will still exist, and you can see this new parking that they put in over here. So you have access to come in and go into this parking area.
That's what I was saying, that's the west one that you said did not.
Correct, yeah, that, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood. Yeah, there's a parking in there. And out front, it's not showing it now, but out front, there's a, there's a bus drop-off and things of that nature going on right here.
Matt, I have a.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. Does the speed limit change from what it currently is?
Yeah, you should, it, it drops to 20. It's 35 on Bengal, it drops to 20. It's 25 on these side roads, but it drops down to 20. To navigate comfortably, you're 15 to 20 miles an hour.
So the speed limit itself actually changes in the roundabout?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, I know the design speed it is, and people typically will go slower, but it is also the speed limit.
Also the speed change, correct. Any more questions about that? Sorry.
No, I was just gonna make a comment. There will be a lot of, um, one of the things that causes a lot of the congestion. Uh, especially after school, and I would assume that it's before school as well, is the multiple left-hand turns being made out of the parking lots onto Bengal. And this basically eliminates a lot of those, and it probably allow the flow to be a lot faster or a lot more efficient.
Yeah.
Matt, also.
Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Quick question, um, so the center of this kidney-shaped, uh. Uh, roundabout, I guess, we'll call it, uh, that will always never impede any visual through that, is that correct? Just to, it, there'll be a fence there if it will be a wrought iron or whatever, so that you can see visually what's going on in front of you?
Yeah, it's a wrought iron fence. Your visibility typically, when you do a roundabout, you don't always want to be able to see straight across. Because then you, you would, the idea is kind of make you a little less comfortable as you're driving through. But your line of sight is very good through the roundabout. You can see the long sweeping turns. So you do have that. This internally right here, you can see the gray area, that's the landscaping area. We don't intend to have any tall things in here. It's just a landscape. A harsh landscaping to keep people from draw, walking through there. This area on the outside of the yellow is actually a stamped concrete apron. So you're, you can actually, there's, you can see here, you have quite a bit of sight to these two roads, which are what you would be dealing with. As you go in, your line of sight, you can see over here and over here. You typically don't see straight across. But you'll see those, if that makes sense.
It, it does. I just didn't know if they were gonna put, propose, uh, the mayor on a horse in the middle of that. I, I've heard rumor of that.
Already rejected that suggestion. I hope everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, that's called an attractive nuisance.
I've rejected also the high school's request for a bangle in the middle of it, too, so.
You, you want to keep people out of there. They shouldn't, they shouldn't be.
Yeah, we don't want to invite people to get a picture with the mayor on the horse.
But I think it is important to know, uh, and also on that landscaping, that we look at some type of a water-wise landscaping. Tie it into a little bit like we have on the plaza at City Hall, so that it seemed to be a natural, uh, connection almost, so.
The landscaping plan, I don't have that on here, but it will, it's there. The landscaping plan takes into account all of this over here, this corner, this corner. Over here, this corner, and the center of the roundabout, all are tied in together with, with water-wise or zero-scape type landscaping. Because, once again, you don't want to slow, stop traffic going there and do a lot of maintenance, so, okay?
I just, one other quick question. I know we gotta hurry up, but, uh, to Christine's question about access into the school. Now, right now, because a lot of people parking at the church and the city hall, there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic. I'm going to assume, my assumption is, that we'll have less foot traffic going through these crosswalks. Because most people will now be parking on school property, and so we won't have that pinch point. Or a lot of foot traffic right at that one access point. Is that assumption correct?
That assumption is 100% correct. Right now, we can have as many as 50-plus students crossing at any given moment. As a mass herd will come from the LDS church or over here, they'll, they'll just be a mass herd, they'll go across. Once they're able to park over here, we'll get, what we'll get then is the folks who are walking to school. And we have those numbers, and those are tremendously lower than, um, the other. And one of the other things was, like we said, the bicyclists, those who do want to ride their bike to school, they don't have to use the roundabout. The sidewalk's big enough that they can bypass the roundabout and go on the outside of it. Okay, I'll, I'll try to, I, uh-oh, am I still sharing here?
Yep, you are, keep going.
Oh, I'm, I'm hitting, I'm on the wrong screen on my computer. There we go. Okay, so we talked about the truck aprons on their, um, queuing space. You can see the cars lining up. Places for cars to line up as they're waiting for pedestrians to cross, so you can still come in and utilize the roundabout. Um, this is the road dimension. It's just the oval shape, slows cars down, to answer your question. Uh, Councilmember Peterson, it's, it's built in the line of sight. You can see the lines of sight. You can see this road and this road from here. You can see this road, and as you get in here, you can see this one and this, so you can see quite a bit. You just don't always have to see straight across, so you're not making that, uh, fast movement through the middle. Sorry, I keep. There we go. Um, the signal's eliminated, and, uh, that cross gutter, this is, will be eliminated. So we're putting in a storm drain system with this project as well. Um, so just an idea, this is really quick. This is not, I've got one more thing to show you, and then I will open it up for questions. But this is just basically the roundabout and how they operate. I mean, we've all been in them. We've all seen them, and we kind of have an idea of how they work. But I wanted to show you, if I may, um, Tim, how much time do you, do I have? Am I good?
Mayor, I think we're fine for time.
Another five or 10 minutes, yeah.
Okay, well, this will go really quick. So one of the things that, that's important that was said to us is navigating the roundabout. Um, we heard, we actually. Um, we heard, we actually met with the community, the school community council. On a couple of occasions and they were concerned about navigation of the roundabout. Um, quite frankly, I think the high school students will be better at navigating these than I will because they, they, they're learning to drive these things. And when I got my license, these things didn't exist, so. I think things will work out, um, but one of the things we're gonna do is put on our website, navigation of the roundabout. This isn't it, so I thought I'd show you. We are still working on this. This will be ready for the, um. This will be ready for the open house. Sorry. I'm sorry?
On November twelfth?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so just to, like I said, there, this has a little bit of work to do. We know that. There's some things we're working on. But this gives you an idea. You can see the pedestrian trail around the la, roundabout. In blue will highlight those things. You can see the car traffic, how to navigate through a roundabout. We see the bike ramps. We'll be putting bicyclist on those. Um. You can, right now, th- there's a way you set these, just FYI, the cars aren't being very, they're being very conservative here. Um, you'll see they don't even pull out. It's a model thing, but it will be modeled for it. There he goes. So the car starts to travel. So this is something we'll be ha, we will have on our website and it, it actually will. Um. This gives you a little better look. This is the latest version as we work through the iterations and you can see on here, we've actually put pedestrians into the process. And you'll see where the cars are stopping and waiting for the pedestrians. So all started again. This is what we'll be showing at the open house. You can see the pedestrians, cars waiting. These pedestrians over here.
Matt, Matt, how about fire and police? So with our public safety people, both Robbie and Riley. Does this take their concerns into account?
Yes, like I said at the beginning, we, uh, I'll stop the volume on this thing. We took into account the, the largest truck we could for a design truck. And that gives them the ability to go through the roundabout without having to make any weird movement. So if they wanted to go from the south to the east, they can actually make this turn without having to go in the roundabout. Sorry. They can make this turn to the east without having to go make a, a full loop around the roundabout and then go on through. So there's aprons for them that they are able to drive across and get their trucks through there. I don't think that they come very often in their ladder truck from the south to the east. They're, they're coming up this way to get to where they need to be. Up in this part of the world, but yeah, and as far as the police are concerned, it's navigable for all vehicles. Um, I'm not. Yes, we've taken those things into account.
Matt, one other quick question is this is gonna be a big project. What happens during construction of this? How, how does that, uh? How does that work as far as keeping the traffic going through and at the time of the year, I guess that's done?
Okay, that, the last thing I wanted to show you was the timing on the project and where we are. Obviously, we've been through. We are in final design. We've worked with UDOT closely. We've worked with our engineers. And, uh, and gotten to this point, we're working and finalizing our right of way acquisition. There's, there's, uh, one more property that we're finalizing. We should have the information at the end of this month. Um, about where, where, where that is. Uh, we will advertise this winter in December, January and start construction in the summer. We're hoping to do that in conjunction with, well, we are doing that in conjunction with the school. Who will be reconstructing their parking lot at about the same time or maybe two months after we start. So as far as equipment staging, getting, uh, they, we've worked with the school and they're allowing us to stage in that parking area. So we don't have trucks and equipment on the side of the road. Um, the MOT you're talking about, keeping the traffic open, we've put it in there that we always have to have traffic flowing. Two lanes of traffic during the construction of this. Um, it will be, and I'm not gonna pull any punches, it's gonna be a nightmare for about three months. Getting traffic in and out. Um, we're doing it at the least impact time during the summer. Um, when we have students, uh, are gone. Um, the idea is we'll have other routes for cars to travel and go. Uh, we'll keep, we will have notifications on the schedule. We'll keep the truck traffic on this. We really don't want to send a lot of truck traffic through neighborhoods. So we'll work something out that way to keep the truck traffic going through this. They may have to wait. But, you know, like we said, everybody's gonna have a, have to deal with it for a little bit. It will be impactful. But the idea is to be done in three to four months on this project and that's pushing them pretty hard.
It's, it's really a three to four month. I was, I, I guess, I remembered it was more like a sixty day thing, so I'd need to adjust my paradigm.
No, no, sixty, I would, well, if we want to triple the price, we can probably do it in sixty days, but.
I'm just, I just want to make sure I don't have a wild expectation of what's supposed to happen.
Or I'll be honest with you, four months is really pushing a project. When you do, when you do reconstruction in an area like this. The biggest problem obviously is traffic. Um, that's a huge problem. It would have been great, not that COVID is a wonderful thing, if this thing was ready to go during March, April. Of let this past few months ago, when traffic was down to nothing, but. This is where we are, um, and we're doing our best to limit the, uh, impact to the residents and the traveling public. That's really what we're trying to do.
Oh, that's, it's a tremendous help to be able to stage on the high school property. That, that'll help immensely in the time.
They'll have to open roads at night. Um, there will be closed roads, closed lanes, but they'll have to open roads at night. Um, so things that we, we're, we're taking those things into account. So in a nutshell, that, oh, look, thank you. There we go. The old thank you slide. Doesn't say questions. Um, so I will ask, are there any questions about where we are and what's going on on this? Any comments that I need to know about?
Well, a quick comment from me personally and open up to questions is that, uh, after meeting with several neighbors over the last year, uh, looking at the original concept plan. Uh, looking where we are now and talking to the school district. I think we've come a long, long way. I, uh, my biggest concern on those original concepts. Was the, uh, the safety issue of pedestrians. How we're funding them through certain crosswalks and how we get them there and, and, and limit their access others. I, you know, I, I think it's outstanding. It's, it's, it's come a long way, so wow, thank you. Other question, I know Scott, you've worked on this a lot.
Um, my question, um, the narrow end of that is, uh, is that the standard radius or is it the larger end and the, whi, which ones? Um, they're not the same radius on the east end and the west end, which, which ones? Uh, if they were circles, what would those, I don't know if I'm explaining myself well, but.
Without the drawings in front of me, I don't know what the radius is on.
Well, then maybe.
The federal highway and the Ashco standards for, for radius on this type of speed. And they are, they're fairly tight radius, um, to slow the traffic down. Obviously, the tighter the radius, the slower the traffic, you know, so.
Matt, one thing I love about it is the, like the mayor mentioned, the pedestrian traffic was our biggest fear. A lot of it, people are not as used to with roundabouts. Uh, recently I've had the opportunity to go to a lot of different roundabouts, just to see what they're like. Most of it is just, uh, yielding and making sure that you do that right, but the hundred and six hours of emissions saved, I think that's a minimum. Uh, that's a big plus, but I love the way they brought that on the south end of it, to bring that around. I, I love that design part of it.
Yeah, it's, I, I, I think one of the things that, uh, I, I, but I, we kind of walked into this thing and I told the designer, basically, I'd like you to build me a giant crosswalk. That will allow cars to drive through it. And short of putting in a tunnel or an overhead pedestrian, I don't think we can get much more pedestrian friendly. Than what this thing actually offers. There's a lot of amenities for pedestrians through here.
Hey, Riley, Robbie, uh, Councilmember, uh, Michael, uh, any, any final comments? Again, we'll still have the, uh, uh, open house coming up for the public to take a fine look as well.
No, I don't, for the fire perspective, I don't see too many challenges and we navigate roundabouts in other areas. And so the, I mean, the hardest vehicle might be the tiller, but even then it's designed specifically to go through obstacles like this, so. I think for us, and like you said, our, our crews will learn to navigate it pretty effectively. I don't have any concerns at this time.
Thank you. Robbie, public safety point of view, are you, any concerns or questions?
I think, uh, Matt had every concern we had, everything from the kids crossing to, um, controlling speeds and, um, points of view. Although people in Utah are not used to roundabouts unless you're from St. George, we might have to educate them, but, uh, it will reduce speed and I, I think he did a good job in, in working with the school and, uh, the ingress and egress to the, to the school and, and, uh, Councilman Brackton's right about the left turners coming out of the school and I think it'll avoid a lot of congestion and temptations of the kids, uh, just jaywalking, so I think it's well done.
Any other comment? All right, Matt, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, great progress.
We'll keep you up to date on where we are. So Thursday, next Thursday night. Um, you can log in. There's a way to log in, FYI, it should be on the Twitter and the Facebook and it's been sent out in the newspaper, I mean, the newsletter and we'll have all that, that out there.
Now, the public part where they can come here and see things on boards, is that just the same two hours or is that all day or?
No, it's a, it's a one hour. The, both of the, we're trying to limit the amount of time. So both of them are one hour presentations, not in, in the open houses. It's very similar. They'll be able to log in with, uh, WebEx.
No, I'm saying the people, the people who come to city hall who want to, I thought you had a social distancing.
Yeah, we do, so we're gonna have.
Is that for one hour as well or is that for two?
Well, yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, I, I would encourage you if, well, maybe one hour is sufficient if there's not that many people, but, uh, give everybody an opportunity.
Well, if we have, if we have people in there, obviously we don't shut the doors as they're coming in. We, we, we've, we've done one hour open houses that have lasted three hours, so. We will, uh, we'll, we'll use our best judgment on this.
Uh, be sensitive to that. All right, thanks again. Any, uh, final comments on that? Here and then, let's, uh, move ahead. We've got one other important item, uh, that's, uh, further discussion on our compensation study that, uh, and that we talked about a couple, uh, meetings back. Uh, so I'll turn over, uh, Tim to add some additional information on, and we can have some further discussion. Tim, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I want to talk a little bit more about, uh, some of the information that we provided, um. In addition to what we presented last or two weeks ago. Um, so as follow-up to the October twenty-second discussion, we, we provided the additional information proposed in the compensation study. And I just want to reiterate, there was a lot of work that was put into this study. We spent probably hundreds of hours. Um, from Marina as our intern and, and Scott and Paula, the department heads being involved. Really appreciate the efforts on this and it's a, it's a very comprehensive, uh, study. I feel the information and that's proposed and the pay structures and chart, changes are fair and accurate. And I feel very good about the information. We, we can definitely go into more detail on that. Let me just give a few comments related to this. I, you know, I've worked here for the past couple of years. I realize every single day, um, that I work here, the important asset of our employees, um, and, and how important they are for this community. Their efforts and their service each day make our community better and I really appreciate, um, their diligence and what they do. Like I say, I'm happy to answer questions and we can go into the details. It's important to note that there is a huge need to address adjustments to bring us to market. In the study, we found some positions were thirty-four percent below market. And I feel now is really the time to address, uh, compensation for our employees. We've outlined the budget projections, um, which we modified those and updated those based on council input. And that was in your packet as well. We feel there's adequate revenue, not just in this year, but in years to come to allow for this adjustment to occur. We've also taken a conservative approach to implementing pay increases during the pandemic, as you know. We feel this strategy has been prudent, um, but with the revenue significantly greater than anticipated. Once again, I feel now is the time for implementation of this, of the compensation modifications. We, there are also questions about other communities. We've looked at what other communities have done along the Wasatch Front. Many have implemented some form of pay increases already in this budget year. For example, Harriman, Murray, um, Orem, which is outside of the Salt Lake Valley, but Riverton, Lehigh, which was part of our study, Draper, Sandy, South Jordan. Along with UPD have implemented some form of increase already in this budget year. Unified Fire implemented, implemented its market adjustments in two phases, one last year. And then in January of this year, and they're reviewing future merit and coal increases in January as well. Additionally, Salt Lake County also implemented pay increases last January. And then they're planning on adjustments again this coming January as well. And there are others that are, are looking at waiting, but there are a number that have already implemented, um, their, their pay increases. And I've also referenced in my memo, both, both memos that I sent to you, the Utah Employers Council, which indicates that many industries, both public and private are projecting pay increases. Therefore, if we implement the proposed adjustments, we will not be an anomaly, um, based on both the public and private sectors. So based on this information, I, 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 I'm here to present and Scott and Pollak can assist with questions and details if you want to look into that. Um, I'm, I really feel like it's important for us to look at implementing the compensation adjustments. I'm still, I'm recommending that we implement that soon, that we go forward with a, a budget amendment in the next council meeting. And implement that, uh, as soon as possible. Our employees, as I've mentioned in my memos, have gone sixteen months without increases and they've been patient during this difficult time, but I really feel strongly that it sends an important message of how we value their efforts if we move this forward, um, sooner rather than later. So I'm happy to go into the detail, answer questions. We can pull things up on the screen as well, but I just wanted to give you those comments.
Well, thank you. A good introduction to, uh, you just moving in. Uh, now I have, uh, six or eight questions myself, but I'll hold for a moment because I don't want to dominate, uh. Any other council members, uh, have some media questions or I can begin? Okay, well, let me, let me just, uh, introduce a couple of questions. Um. First of all, I, I think, uh, representing the whole council, there's no question that our, our employees are our greatest asset and, and don't want any of the questions to take away. The, the feeling I have for their importance and their value to us. Uh, my first question, and, and maybe Tim, you can, uh, see if you can invalidate this is. What, what was our position as a council? Uh, first of all, going back a year and a half, uh, what was our position when we did the, the market study? And what, what timing, uh, parameters did we put on, on, uh, implementation and market when we did the current budget?
Yeah, so, so I believe in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, that budget year is when the council determined to have us, uh, move. Hold on just a second. It was eighteen, nineteen, I believe, is when the council, um, identified some funding. We originally had proposed and requested funding to have an outside group look at this. The council narrowed that funding down and, and wanted us to hire an intern and do this in-house. Which we did and we prepared and worked through that in preparation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget year. We were, we had finalized the study, had presented it at the, uh, at least at preliminary meetings at the, uh, compensation, uh, committee as well as the budget committee. And then we were planning on implementation, um, in July. Obviously, we had to have council, more council input on it, but that's when COVID um, took its effects. And then as we went through our budget process. Um, it was determined that we would put it on hold until we understand a little bit further where. it was determined that we would put it on hold until we understand a little bit further where we're at with budget projections and revenue projections through the COVID crisis. And there was discussion about looking at that mid-year. So in January, we, we've, we've gone about six months of knowing where our sales tax revenue is based on the COVID adjustments. And so that's why we're bringing it to you right now and to look at this from that standpoint.
Okay. I appreciate that because that's, that's my question is, is my understanding, like a lot of the other jurisdictions, we're talking about some increases that, those are prior to the COVID challenge that we face. So if you talk about increasing things that happen in other jurisdictions in January, that was before the COVID things, yeah.
Yeah, but the, the cities that I'm, I told you about here, so many of those cities implemented July. So they, they moved forward with some form of, of pay adjustment in July, some in September. But, but there were many that, that just moved forward with some type of increase. So it wasn't just in January before COVID. Some of these cities took steps prior to that.
And I'm not, I'm not debating it. There's no question that many have done that and, and some with, like the county and UFA and stuff have done it before COVID. But that's one question. The other question is that commitment that we had with our last budget cycle was that we would monitor and look at mid-year. And, and I interpreted that was January. I'm, I'm, I'm personally fully supportive of the market study and compliment you and the staff and using an intern to do it and do something for 10,000 that originally was budgeted at 75,000. So that was very efficiently done. You, you mentioned that there is adequate revenues to support this adjustment. I think it's important, and Scott, you can help me understand this better, is that if, if we move forward on whatever timing, if it's, say if it is January as we originally talked about, that's a $300,000 budget adjustment. And if you annualize that to the following full budget cycle, that's another 600,000, assuming you maintained the same level of funding with merit and all the things. So it's, it's just under a million dollar commitment that the council has to consider. And you say there's adequate revenues, but Scott, would this come from revenues or would it come from the fund balance?
So I'm going to share my screen here. So in our, in our fund balance, so if you go back to when we did our property tax increase in 2018, 2019, back here, from a budget standpoint, we can see the budgeted fund balance rate of change right here. So our budgeted fund balance rate of change was negative back when, when this, sorry, wrong line, was negative. I think it was exactly flat when we originally adopted that budget. But then when we adjusted it through the year, we ended up utilizing some money. So we were not actually budgetarily flat other than, you know, when we originally adopted that budget. Going into projections, you know, projections, you know, we went, we were a little bit negative here. The reality is, is we're coming in a little positive by the time this is a projection, mind you. And then budgetarily, we adopted at a million three use of, of budget. With our adjustments that were kind of tentatively planning, that still need to be brought before you, it would put us positive in our fund balance for the current years. Going into next year, there's a use of, of fund balance that does grow as you go out into those years. That is primarily driven by the fact that we are, our expenditures go up, I'll say 3% roughly in a, in a given year. And our revenues go up by around 1% a year. And that's primarily due to the fact that if you were to split our revenues into three pieces, about a third of it is property taxes that are flat, relatively flat every year. About a third of that is sales taxes that do get some inflationary increase each year. And about a third of that is fees and/or grants or other things like that, that have a tendency to stay flat as well. And so when you're looking at that, our revenues, generally speaking, don't keep up with our expenditures on a, on a growth basis. So going into future years, we do get into a use basis. But you can see this column here that I'm in, other than, you know, the actuals, which is, this is our projection of our actuals for that year. And then this, which would be an update to the budget of this year. At, at no time are we actually budgeted to actually be balanced in our general fund as we go along. Now, as we go into future years of, of this projection, the imbalance does get larger as you go out there. And this, this makes assumptions that, you know, nothing, nothing new in terms of capital and that out into the future would be added in, which isn't probably an accurate projection that way, but, but we're not necessarily balanced on, on a budgetary basis. We would be utilizing fund balance.
Yeah. And, and thank you. And I, I think that's my point. And I don't want that misunderstood. It, it doesn't mean that I'm, I'm not supportive of, of, of moving ahead and looking at January. I just think it's important for the council and for all of us to understand that it's, it's coming from the fund balance, that there, there is not revenue, so to speak, and, and you can debate a little bit, that supports an increase of the same. But at the same time, when we passed a tax increase a couple of years ago, is, and is, as Christine, a council member, we assumed that we will have to draw down that fund balance each year a little bit, and, and same as most enterprise fund type businesses do. But this, this for clarity purposes, I just want to make sure we understood that. This is, would be from the fund balance and it would be three to $400,000 in the initial budget cycle. And then you analyze that would be an additional $600,000 from that fund balance going forward. The other thing that I think is important, my concern is that we, we, we are in a much better situation than we thought we'd be in. Therefore, I, I, as we committed to the employees, January seems palpable to me. But at the same time, I caution myself and, and, and our employees and the public that as you monitor the impacts of, of COVID right now, I think going into these winter months, it is still extremely uncertain of, of what could happen. So with that, those are some of my comments and, and my concerns. But again, I come back to the commitment we made many months ago to do the study, the commitment to bring our employees online and to, unlike a lot of people in the public sector, to keep them employed, to maintain appropriate salaries, to get them into market. And so I think that is, is a commitment we made in the past and hopefully they've seen we've, we've kept that commitment. But now, any, any further discussion or comments from the council?
I have a question for Scott, George. So basically in the future, it would not be sustainable because we, we basically, we're okay now. Our revenues actually came in, we thought we were going to get hit very hard, but in the future, if we're static on a lot of our revenues, something's going to have to change down the road. Is that correct, Scott? Am I correct in that?
That is a correct statement. And you know, if you really look at it, when we adopted the budget back in, and this was before, you know, Tim and my time, but when the budget was adopted back here in the 2018, 2019 budget year, at that point in time, we, when we did that, we only balanced the budget. And the, the different projections, there were several different projections that were put in place at that time. And all of them showed that future years would start going into utilizing fund balance. Didn't matter which version of projection was utilized. They all showed that. The unfortunate thing is, is how our tax system, especially with the property taxes is set up. You don't get any inflationary growth in terms of revenues from property taxes. You're only guaranteed what you've got the prior year. And so the only way to be able to utilize that and the way that that typically happens, and, and I think it was, can't remember right, but I think it was our last meeting where I showed the history of when entities in the Salt Lake County had done property tax increases. Typically entities will do property tax increases anywhere from every one to say 10-year increments. If you go a longer period of time, you usually are doing a higher property tax increase. And, and that is how our, our treaty and taxation slash property tax system is set up here in, in the state of Utah. So that, that has to go through that process periodically in order to keep those revenues up with the quote, I'll use the term inflationary type costs or market type cost increases that you see, whether it's personnel costs or other costs as we see them. I would say that 3% is generally a, a normal, if you will, kind of maybe two to 3% is a normal kind of inflationary type annual increase that we've seen over the past, say 10 years that we, we have that data. And yet on the revenue side, other than sales tax revenue performing well, the other revenue sources generally are a little bit stagnant and flat. Unless we actually go in, like, like I was saying, on property tax, you can do that by truth and taxation, which we've only done one time. Or you can adjust a fee, but you'd have to adjust probably a lot of fees in order to really have a real impact on, you know, the fee aspect of revenues. So, so you're right. The fee aspect just does not grow at the same pace that we typically see the demand on expenditures. And that's pretty common, I would say, from my experience in government. That's pretty common, how the structure of, of revenues throughout most, at least most general funds are where there's prop, sales taxes and property taxes involved.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
This is, uh, this is Christine. I, I echo what the mayor says, you know, thank you Scott and Tim and staff for putting this together. I think it was really helpful for me to see it. I tend to agree with the mayor in terms of waiting till January. I just think there are a couple unknowns. I, I think what I was looking for and I, and, and like the mayor, like I, I totally support this request. With the caveat though, that I was, I was really looking for the holistic view of things. I was hoping that we could finalize what we were doing with stormwater. I know that we couldn't have our police discussion a couple of weeks ago, but I really would like to hone in on, are there additional needs that we need to consider when it comes to police in addition to salary adjustment? Are there other things within that budget that might need to be increased? I also asked, I think multiple times, what the council thought about looking at an annual increase. I know we can't bind other councils to do so, but annually, should we be looking to increase our, our property taxes so that we don't have in four or five years, a big one? Just so that people can anticipate what that would be annually. I think it's easier to budget if you know what's coming versus in three or four years to just surprise people. I think that was actually the intent of truth and taxation was to look at it annually versus every four years. Because when I look at 2024, 2025, and I see we're in a deficit situation with our fund balance, that, that, that scares me in case something happens with, with roads or some other issue within our city. That's a, a big, big number. We also have the Public Works ask. We still have, I think, the telecom tax out there. So I, I just think that I, I would like to recommend that we use the next two months to maybe try to solidify some of these outstanding items and really come up with a more cohesive plan as we look out into the future. And I think that is probably in the best, that's the best use of our time and the best interest of our city's health in terms of fiscal health with coronavirus and things. So that's, I know that's a lot to ask, but I just feel like I just don't want to just pick off things onesie twosies and say yes. And then at the end of the day, we realize that we actually, if we had looked at it comprehensively, we could have had a better plan and we could have anticipated some, some needs come, come June. So that's, that's my, I'm sorry, I'm, again, I'm supportive of, of the ask, but I still think there are just a couple of things that I would like us to consider.
And you know, and, and I understand your comments on that. The interesting thing is, and this is kind of unique because most of the time, these things are being considered in the context of the whole budget process that we go through, like we did in the spring. And so you're really seeing these, these parts of the puzzle fit in as you go through the full budget process. What's been unique about this year, obviously with COVID, is we went through that budget process, really not on, understanding what the revenue shortfalls would be in a variety of different things. And, and we said we would address this at a later time. And that's why you see this coming, you know, independently of a full budget proposal, like you would normally do. So it's kind of a unique situation that we've been in, in the last few months, obviously with COVID, but in our budgetary processes as well.
One thing to note on this is this, I, that I've highlighted here, 707,000. The actual change between, you know, this and then this is a million 707, but that includes about a million dollars of COVID revenues that are not going to repeat. So taking that out, the actual change in expenditure is about 700,000 there, about 304,000 here, about 529,000 here and about 286,000 here. And the average of those is just a little over $450,000 annually. And then I wanted to scroll down to the bottom of this and not included options down here gives you some things to consider. One is for every 1% property tax increase, you net about 80,000 in new revenue. So if you did 2%, it would be 160,000, 3% would be 240,000. The stormwater expenses are not included in here, nor are the revenues. And so we know that there's probably between one and four million dollars of, of stormwater projects in year one and that need to be done and thereafter about a million dollar annually. If we implement a stormwater fee, depending on the option that's selected, we could save up to $600,000 annually or potentially need to put in an additional $200,000 annually into the additional cost of stormwater, depending on which fee structure would be adopted. But then on the, the worst side is depending on, you know, if we don't implement that, that because of the demand of those capital projects, it could need to have about a million dollars annually pumped into the capital projects fund in order to take care of some of those. And then like you had mentioned, there's the 350,000, a roughly annual telecom fee revenues that could be considered. And then I also listed here the potential for a public works building at around 500 million. And that would have to be broken back down into annual bond payments and determine, to determine exactly what, you know, how much that would be. But probably in the $350,000 range, depending on the number of years. But these are some of the items that are not included above, that could be included in above, but without direction, I didn't know which way, you know, to go on some of those items.
No, appreciate that, Scott. Councilor Bracken, any comments or thoughts? And I'm going to throw out a recommendation here in a second for your consideration.
You, you, you're on, you're on mute.
I, the third time I hit it, it was, it worked. I, we did a, we did, we did a fairly conservative estimate at, at the beginning of this budget year in July. And we held everything and we just said, yes, we'll look at it for Jan. And we held everything and we just said, yes, we'll look at it for January. I don't think anybody was expecting that we would be, we would come out even, or, or, or where we are at. With that being said, we did do the, the market study, we were planning on doing that. Those always come from ongoing funds. They need to, you can't be getting grants and paying your employees with one-time funds. That needs to come from ongoing revenue. And so, I guess, Mayor, I, I guess I could see that the January start date or the three hundred thousand this year, or the, we, we typically have a, a few hundred thousand dollar increase year over year. Because we live in the world, we have employees, they need to, they need to be paid, they need to have health insurance, all those things need to go. And that's just an expense that we deal with, just like everybody else. We're not like everybody else in that we don't sell extra police services or fire services, or we don't sell extra garbage services. We, we have, we have kind of the level that we need to do and we need to pay all those people. I would, we didn't anticipate what we would have coming down as, as the CARES funding. All that's, I guess, a prelude to, I don't have a problem with pulling the trigger on the compensation study two months early, just because that part of it, I could see as a one-time use of some of those CARES funding and some of that stuff out of, from those funds that we didn't plan on either. I understand your desire to do it as we always planned. I, I, I get that. But I also, I mean, that would be my, my rationale for doing it a little bit sooner and taking the two hundred, two hundred and fifty, or whatever it happens to be for the, for the next two months as, as a one-time payment. At least inside, inside my head, so. I, I would be okay with that, but I also understand I'm one vote out of five, so.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Uh, no, it's just the council members right now. Who's that?
This is Paula.
That was Paula.
Paul, I, I, I think, well, go ahead, Paula.
It's very quick. I just want to put some numbers sometimes to employees because it's kind of hard to think of employees as a dollar number. I don't like to do it very often either, but just so you know, to replace a regular employee, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars, the cost to the city. To replace a department head is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those things are things you need to consider. The other thing is come January, a lot of new police agencies are coming on board. And so, we need to be competitive and ready for that before January, in my opinion, would be nice. And then the last thing I just want you all to consider is that we are not asking to be on top of the market. We are just asking to be on the market, on average market. And, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Bye, Paula. Thank you. I don't want to get into a debate and, and, you know, with the employees, you know, I I know I will not be considered as being sincere, but there's no question employees are extremely valuable. But also, I have many acquaintances both with employees, but also with people out in the private sector. These are difficult and challenging times, okay? I'm in meetings every week almost with the county and, and other private sector groups. So these are challenging times. My personal position, and, and we can just decide how this is, is that we support the market study and, and put our employees in market. It includes within it the coal already and, and the merit. I, I'm committed to do what I said several months ago, which was January. Moving that up, I think sends kind of a obviously sends a message that the employees won't like, but to the public who are also struggling, that just shows that we're, we're being sensitive to the challenges, but also trying to maintain the city and provide those services. I think we, we, we shoot for January as we previously committed. And we bring people in, in market for, for our police. It puts them in the top three in the market, which is the same as UFA, which I think is, is, is important. I think, but one caveat, when we do that with respect to Christine's concerns, that we do need to have further discussions and it may not be till our retreat in January. Look at all the other priorities are going to be pushing us to fight for those limited funds. And Mayor Wilson made it very clear to me and to Tim that in no way whatsoever do they want to see the CARES Act funding going to backfill any budgets. And I think we committed, we would not do that. So I want to be sensitive and keep that. And Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. With that as well, that even though that's a three hundred thousand budget adjustment in January, the annualization, the next budget cycle still has to be approved at that time. And we would have to understand if things continue to be as positive right now, I see that continuing and I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. But everyone has to understand if, as we approach through these next several months, if COVID causes unnecessary things, we go back another lockdown or something happens, that could impact the budget going forward. With that being said, my position is to support what we're doing or what's been proposed through the market study for January one, which is our original commitment. But as Christine mentioned, we've got to get an agenda going to start talking about some of these other critical budget concerns that we need to look at. That Scott put him on his other list. And that's, and, and then too, at that time, there's a whole mixture of things that come in. Picking one at a time right now is not right, but we talked about this one being something we would consider mid-year. So I'm talking in circles, but that's my personal position. And we'll let the other council, we don't vote on it right now, but we give direction to prepare a budget adjustment if that's so desired by the council.
I think they need to go ahead and prepare the, the budget adjustment. I don't think that there's any question there.
Well, we just need to make sure we have a, a consensus of preparing it for January as I proposed, or Scott, you proposed even sooner. So for the discussion, we want to bring it back again.
I guess the question comes down to November or January. Is that, is that what we're talking about right now?
Could be, I guess. It depends.
That would be the short answer for me.
You could have four different dates.
No, I'm just saying, for what the good discussion is right now, it's, it's, we're trying to decide. And we, we don't want to bring care into it if we can, but I guess it's proposed too by some that maybe use care, but that's a one-time fund. I guess it really depends on down the road is, is the concern that everyone has, I believe. As far as just the sustainability, but like Paula mentioned and, and others, we know, it does cost quite a bit to, to replace people as well. So it's, it is monetarily a question of, of where do you, where do you get, where do you lose some of the effectiveness of, of the November through January type thing?
Well, my position is that we let employees know tonight that it's, it's planned for January one. We prepare all the additional, that's what, you know, less than two months, we prepare the budget adjustment for our police. Hopefully with that, we, we show them a commitment to be in the top three. And if those are considering, they don't know things, hopefully they know this is here and they can look at that as a comparative figure. So, but again, I can't force them to stay. I can just be as fair as I can. January one is our, was our commitment, I believe, in my interpretation. And I'm just willing to keep that commitment, but still have a lot of concerns budgetary going forward because the fund balance is an issue and a, a tax increases in the near future if we're not careful. It's probably there anyway, but.
Mayor, may I just say something?
Absolutely. The city manager.
So, and, and I know that council will deliberate, deliberate potentially more. So what I'm hearing is that based on your proposal, we bring a budget amendment for, for the remaining portion of this year, which would be the roughly three hundred thousand dollars for these increases. And then
We clarify, the remainder of the budget year.
Yeah, the remainder of the budget year. I'm saying the remainder of this budget year. Then between obviously January and July of next year, that's going to be, that there's going to be several incremental discussions about a variety of different things as Councilmember Michael has mentioned related to all these issues related to the budget. Whether it's telecom, obviously our process, process with the stormwater fee, the revenue projections, where they're at, all of that's going to play into our future discussion on the next budget cycle. But what, right now, what I'm hearing is that between now and January, we need to bring forward a budget amendment to address the, the market and compensation study increases for the remaining portion of this budget year. Is that correct?
That's, that's my position personally, yes. And, and even with that too, I, I can't wait to hear the, the study that Zion Banks does, because I want to understand what our small businesses are dealing with as well, yeah. Doug, Christine?
Sorry, Christine, I wasn't sure if you're ready to speak or not. I guess, I guess there's, there's, there's about four or five factors that, that I think go in on this. It's, we know that down the road, sustainability is going to, is difficult. I know that people still, I wasn't here when we had the tax increase, but people still say that was just a gigantic tax increase. Nobody likes taxes, especially property. But I guess my question is too, is we, we have, our police officers, obviously a big part of our budget and there are going to be new cities opening it up. So I don't know if that's a timing issue that we need to look at too and factor in. And I think that this is a difficult, this is a difficult business management decision right now, I think, that we need to look at. And I, I know it's tough because we don't want to look too far in the four, in the future. But we need to look at the present and decide what's an equitable situation for our employees and for our city, because everyone within our city, obviously this, this affects them directly.
So did you take a position?
I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm trying to decide. You know, the, the numbers, this is a difficult one because we've talked about
Amen.
What's that?
It is. It's a very difficult one, no question about it.
It's difficult because I'm a small business owner and I know that it's difficult to, like Scott mentioned, it's we are not producing something like widgets, you know what I mean? We have a city that is basically funded by those taxpayers within the city. But we want the best product, which is what our city offers in that we can. And we, we don't want to swat, flee and swallow the camel either. And so I, I think that it's, it's a my business side is, is screaming at me and my the morale throughout the city is screaming at me as well. So give me a minute. Maybe Christine has something to say. She's, she's kind of being a little bit quiet here. Give me a minute just to, to think here about all the moving parts of this.
Any comments, Christine?
Um, I don't think I have anything more to elaborate other than I, I'm a small business owner too, Doug. I'll give you a couple of minutes to think. And I lost an employee and I had to replace that employee. And, and I understand the, the comment that Paula makes, and especially because the staff that we have, we, we really appreciate so much. But I, but I do think that we did say that we'd look at this in January. And so I, I would hope that expectations were, were set. There was some hope that maybe we would determine something sooner, but I, I just, I just have a pit in my stomach with where things are at right now. I wish, I wish that we had better numbers. I wish the COVID cases were going down. I wish, like the mayor said, we weren't. I mean, I heard yesterday that perhaps the governor's thinking about closing restaurants again. And when I start to hear those things, I just think, wow. I, I don't know if we would want to consider if we met again and talked about this in January, if, if things are going absolutely tremendously, we could go back and, and consider retroactively giving some of those dollars. I don't know if there's something that we could do. And that's, I don't know that you could do that in cities, but I just, I'm just feeling a little queasy and I'm, and I'm sorry, but that's just how I'm feeling.
Doug, Scott, any further comments?
Oh, no, I mean, I, I can count as well. If that's the way you feel, it's the way Christine feels, there's no way we're getting to three to change it. And I'm, I mean, January is, is fine. I, I, I'm just saying I don't have a problem with moving it up. But that's, we can certainly move forward. You know, there, I, I'm glad that we're hitting that. I was afraid that we missed the boat and somehow still missed January. And we're not doing that. And so I think that the employees do need to do it. I think that it will be good. I think the timing will be okay. And, and, and the adjustment does really well for our police force and they know that we, they have our support as well. I would say the same thing with fire, but they're, they're handled with a different board and a different, in a different way. But we didn't, you know, we support all of our, all of our employees, our first responders on both sides. And so I think it needs to be done. If it needs to be done in January, then let's, that, that would be the latest.
Ma, Mayor, if, if I may just add, so we would bring, we would bring an amendment to you sometime between now and December. It would be the plan. We wouldn't be bringing the amendment in January. It'd be most likely the December fifteenth at the latest, or maybe even the first meeting of December with this adjustment. So we would be prepared to implement in January, the first of January.
That, that would be my position. And, and also with that, boy, just maybe even a letter from the council to the employees with our deliberations and our challenges, explaining to them kind of what we've talked about tonight and expressing our appreciation. But with tonight's administrative direction for, as you just described, Tim, we can send that message to them now. That yes, it's coming. We've, we've set a time and a date. We'll make that budget adjustment. But then also too, we will look at a whole variety of things budgetarily as we approach the new budget cycle and with the retreat and with the whole variety of needs and demands. But right now, we recognize that a big part of what we do is Doug referring to, is we provide a service, a high-quality service to our constituents. And the commitment we made several months ago was January and I'm, I'm willing to stand by that. And I have, I have fears, to be honest with you, going forward. But I've been doing this a lot of years and I've been through a lot of things like this. And usually if we continue to have a good process and good discussion and discuss some things, it will come out okay. Just like right now, we're coming out better than we thought we would. And that's why I'm glad to say we can consider it for January. And I appreciate the council's support of that with the understanding that we've still got a lot of work to do. Scott, are you okay with that?
No, that's fine. I mean, if, if my my predictions and fears were that we wouldn't even be considering it now because we'd be down to six hundred thousand. You know, Christine, she said she was, was more concerned. We, we, we worked at this. I think we're both surprised where we're at. So let's get it done. let's get it done.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. I thought we were waiting to make a decision in January, but then I just heard Tim say that we're creating the budget adjustment and we're gonna make it in December 15th. That's, I don't understand the December then how we got back to December, January.
My, my understanding is that we are agreeing to implement the market study with the kind of thing, January 1, as we talked about as a council before, not November 1. And that in the, in the next budget cycle, which begins discussions the first of the year, we need to talk about many other, many of those other budget impact items that you brought up and others.
Okay. So as long as our, as long as folks that are listening or will watch this tape understand, based on our fund balance, we would be initiating this, this COLA and MARA increase. But because of that, we're going to have to have raised revenues another way. Whether that's stormwater fee plus a property tax increase plus a telecom cast. We can't, we can't do this without doing this. So I think it's really important that we all understand, you know, our hawkish fiscal people that, that there is going to have to be hard decisions and there's going to be an increase, maybe a couple increases for our community. As long as everybody understands that, I think that we need to be clear.
Yep. And I think that's, that's, that's well said. And, and obviously the other aspect of that is a timing. I mean, you can, through our enterprise fund type accounting and having a fund balance, it's the timing of, of when that would take place. You know, you can live off your fund balance for a couple of years. And when we did our last tax increase, we understood that. But our next budget cycle is when we will have those frank conversations even further. But yes, this increase, and if it's annualized into the next budget cycle, will draw down the fund balance without, unless you have other revenues come in. And I understand that. But when I put all that together, I'm okay, even with those caveats that Christine said.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. Yeah, we only got a couple of minutes, but I mean, there, there's another way to look at it. Yeah, there's going to need to be tax increases in the future. That's the nature of the beast. Property taxes are flat. Our fees are flat. They don't go up because we don't sell more widgets. That's just the nature of what we do. We're the government. We're not a small business. We don't have extra things we can go to do that. That is, that is, we don't do the things that everybody else wants to. If everybody wanted to do that, it would be profitable, then there would be the private sector providing that thing. The other way to look at this is we've saved off that $300,000 because we didn't do it in July because of COVID. But it would have normally been part of the normal budget cycle. It was deserved probably back then, but we had some fears. And so you know, I mean, I get, that's another way. So we, 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 we did not expend that money because of those fears and our employees have, have dealt with that. And so saying that because of this, we're going to have another one. This, this is an ongoing thing. It happens constantly. Medical costs, cost of a gallon of milk, gasoline, all those things that everybody pays for, we all are familiar with the concept of inflation and we need to deal with it. That's not going to go away. And so how, how fast and how soon we raise revenues and/or compensation to our employees dictates the timing. But we can also be too slow and too little. And so you know, you know, I think it needs, I, 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 I absolutely believe we need to pay for what we demand as citizens. We need to be frugal. I think we've done that. I think we've shown that for the last six months or four months since the January or July. And so, yeah, I was, I was, I wasn't expecting anything other than the January, the January 1.
Okay. We only got a couple of minutes and I'm sorry, but I want to make sure we give Tim appropriate direction. But Doug, are you okay with that?
I am. It's a tough situation just because like Scott says, I don't think people think that inflation happens to everybody except for cities, apparently. We're not immune to that. And, and I, that's the struggle is each one of us in a city, we hate to see things go up, but there's going to be a point where we say, like Christine said, maybe we do it a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, rather than having, waiting for five, 10 years and all of a sudden get hit with a great big slam on this. And like you say, our product is our officers. It's our, everybody in our, in this, in our building here. And, and what they do for us is provide a great service. So it really depends on how, how we can best serve our, the constituents within our city and be able to still not have them screaming at us because the property tax is going to go up again.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to cut off the discussion a bit. I think we have, have the direction. And Tim, your challenge with me is to take what seems to be almost a little bit of a negative discussion and turn it to a positive, which means we need to thank our employees for their service. We need to thank them for how they've handled the budget, as Scott shared with us, on the amount of underspend. We need to talk about that this is implemented in January 1, which brings them into market and how, how that came about. And then, and again, I think they all understand that there's an annual budget and every budget, they're opened up again to look at. And hopefully the, the numbers continue to be as positive. We're very lucky as a city to weather the storms, so to speak. And so I think we move that direction. I appreciate the, the understanding and the dialogue. And again, sometimes we agree to disagree on some finer points, but I think we all have the same goal all in all. And that is thank you to our employees. Hopefully they understand the challenge we have. And we'll go forward and we've got more challenges ahead. With that being said, go right ahead, Tim.
Mayor, five seconds. So we will bring, your next action item will be a budget amendment that we will see sometime between now and December 15th with implementation in January is what you will have to decide on that date. Correct?
Correct. Along with the other budget amendments that you've
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know it doesn't make everybody happy, but I, I think it's, it's what I felt good about. And I think we've got a general consensus and that's a commitment we made and we have challenges going forward. Again, the last item on our work session is again, just a reminder of November 12th for the Bengal Boulevard Open House. If you want to go online or stop by City Hall. And we don't have a closed meeting tonight on anything. And, and some of those things that would be closed item, you, you may have conversation with Tim during your regular meetings. Through that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our work session agenda and reconvene our business meeting at, can we do 7:05? Can we make it that quick? We'll try and get you out here quickly.
I'll move that we close the work session and adjourn to our business meeting and we'll go for a 7:05 start time.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. And you oppose? Okay, adjourned, we'll reconvene at 7:05. And you had an email from Paula earlier, showing you how to do that second meeting. Thank you, everyone.